Okay. We are moving into our testimony portion of the program. And these are the four questions that we put out, five questions, excuse me. These are the five questions that we put out to the public and we're interested in testimony on these and related questions. So I'm not going to read them. They're up here on the screen. They were part of the announcement that went to the, out to the public. In terms of how we're going to do this, our nominal rules are five minutes of oral testimony. I will tell you that we have three people so far signed up to give testimony and so I'm going to be quite flexible with regard to the five minutes. We could sort of automatically give you a doubling of that, but if you want to go through three times, it costs you. So we need donations too. Only kidding. We do certainly encourage written comments. I was taking notes myself based on the speaker's ideas. They were triggering thoughts in my mind. I hope they were triggering thoughts in other people's minds. So if anyone wants to give written testimony, we will be taking that testimony through the end of December and the directions for doing so are at the bottom of the hearing flyer. So I don't need to be concerned about 1:00 PM for the end of the hearing. We should have no difficulty with that at all. Yeah, and there are the directions for doing this, but at any rate, they're at the bottom of the hearing. So the way we're going to do this, I have the three speakers here in order. I'm going to ask you to come forward, state your name, spell it for the court reporter, and then give your presentation from here, from the dais. And then when you're done, we will move on to the next speaker. So our first speaker is Carrie Lindick from the Natural Resource Conservation Service.
Great, thank you. I appreciate being here. I was, my staff gave me some points to hit and I was at 5 minutes and 45 seconds yesterday and I was wondering what I was going to cut out, but thank you. My title is State Conservationist for the USDA Natural Resources Conservation Service. I oversee about 60, 65 employees across the state who work with agricultural producers, farmers and ranchers to do good things on their land. We are non-regulatory, but one of the things that we do have is we have skilled people and we have quite a bit of money actually that comes to us through the Farm Bill to incentivize and motivate private landowners or private managers to do the right things on their land, to make their soils better, to improve their water quality. What does that mean for New Jersey? Basically, I receive about $15 million a year to do this that goes directly to the landowners. So our goal, we're kind of like federal extension agents. We work with farmers and ranchers to help them take care of their soil, to appropriately manage manure, to work on stabilizing stream banks and appropriate application of fertilizers, all in an effort to keep those chemicals out of the streams. We've worked in New Jersey, you know, since the inception of the agency, since the 1930s, and we have successful watershed efforts that we've been involved in, in the Nishanik, in the Musconnet-Kong, the Wallkill, and Kirkwood-Cohanty in Upper Salem. Some of the lessons that we've learned, I'll just share with you. We do a lot of these group projects because we realize we can't do it all on our own. With the inception of our agency, we worked individually with farmers and ranchers and we would work just with them, with whoever asked. And the term was coined "random acts of conservation" across the country and there wasn't enough in any one space to really grab onto for success stories. So these efforts started probably about 20 years ago and I'll speak to an effort that took place in Oklahoma. It just happened. The local folks said, "What if we saturated a watershed with all of our money, all of us who are interested, and see if we can delist a stream? Could that happen?" And it did. I can't tell you how many streams have been delisted there, but what happens in my agency is they said, "What a great thing. We think all the states should do this." So I am actually putting money in the Kirkwood-Cohanty and Upper Salem, targeting water quality just to do this. It wasn't grassroots and ground level driven, which is going to, which I think is important to the success of these type efforts, but some of the lessons that we have learned in these group-type projects is, you know, go where the partners are already involved. We heard Jennifer say that. That really helps. It doesn't help if I deem it's an important watershed. Go where the people who live there think it's important. We have the greatest success if you empower the local people. I can bring to them my federal facilities. I can make meeting rooms available. I can make staff available. I can make copies. I can do all those kinds of things to help nonprofits and help the local work groups go forward. It takes a lot of meetings. We joke, there's a lot of donuts and coffee to get to the point of where things actually start happening. You have to get to know all the players and you have to know what their priorities are and what interests they have and the money that they bring to try and put the pieces of the puzzle together to actually make something happen. From my perspective as a state conservationist, what I can do is I can help remove roadblocks along the way. When you write policy, you try and write policy that fits most situations and therefore it shall be, but when you write policy, you know it doesn't fit every situation. So within my authority, I can waive or exempt certain situations just to get them to move forward. And that's been very helpful. So when you have lots of people coming together and all working together to make something happen, you get success, you get measurable results, recognition, and a lot of times more money because you show that you're successful. So how can DEP, what is our suggestion for how DEP can help in this process? And not that they aren't already, but for the projects that we work on, help capitalize the unique abilities that DEP has to offer to gather, analyze, and share water quality data. We can't do it without them. Make the water quality data available for us to use to make decisions on outreach, prioritization, planning, targeting, microbial source tracking. I mean, it would help so much for us to know where the, where the issues are coming from. Provide funding to fill in the gaps where it's needed. There are certain programs like 319 that are used for water quality projects. I have quite a bit of money and there are things that I wish that I could buy, but I can't. So I have to look for other people to do those things. For example, I can't buy equipment. I can't give a farmer new equipment and not that, there are just those certain things that we need help with. I just do a shout out to Nick Zarepko, who works for DEP, who's been very helpful to us in the Nishanik to get work done on the ground. Another example to help, to get help from DEP is streamlining the permitting process would be very helpful. And especially when you're doing voluntary conservation projects and you're asking a farmer to do these because it's the right thing to do. Vince Mazai of DEP has been another great DEP employee, has been very instrumental in listening to us and helping us come up with language to help get these projects going. So there's lots of opportunities, there's lots of opportunities to leverage. I'll just throw out that all my money comes from the Farm Bill. And the most recent Farm Bill that was passed in 2014 included a new program. It's called the Regional Conservation Partnership Program. And it's basically an opportunity for anybody outside the federal government to earmark my money for a targeted effort. And this is happening right now. The National Fish and Wildlife Foundation was successful in receiving one of these earmarks for the Delaware, the whole Delaware, not just the upper and the lower. And they're matching the William Penn funds. So, I mean, just the William Penn effort was a huge gift to New Jersey and Pennsylvania and New York. But, so anyway, I commend the council for looking beyond the Barnegat. I didn't know everything that was going on in the Barnegat. It's wonderful. I want Trish to come over and work on my projects in the Raritan and other places because you need people like that who are excited and who are willing to look outside the box. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is Kate Hutelmeyer from the Watershed Institute at Stony Brook Millstone
Good afternoon. As Dan said, my name is Kate Hutelmeyer. That's H-U-T-E-L-M-Y-E-R. My name used to be Miller. It was much easier. But as Dan said, I am the coordinator for the Watershed Institute, which is a program of the Stony Brook Millstone Watershed Association. As a program, we provide small grant funding, educational opportunities, and technical assistance to watershed nonprofits throughout the state. So through this work, I've had the opportunity to work with organizations from Lake of Patkong to the Morris River and just about everywhere in between. And first and foremost, I want to thank the council and the department for hosting this meeting. Open dialogue between the department and interested stakeholder groups who also share the mission of protecting the environment is absolutely critical to achieving the water quality goals that we've set for this state. So thank you. And I would just like to take this opportunity to share a few suggestions specifically in terms of stakeholder meetings and greater acceptance and use of volunteer-collected data. So after speaking with many of the groups in my network, one of the suggestions that kept appearing was for DEP staff to revive quarterly stakeholder meetings with the environmental community. These meetings would ideally provide a platform for DEP to share resources and information and needs with interested stakeholders, but it would also give those groups a chance to share their findings, their expertise and their insights, and obstacles that they were facing out in the field. And there are examples of this type of effort currently ongoing in other state agencies. In particular, right now, the New Jersey Department of Health has collaborated with a number of outside groups on what they are calling a Coalition's Working Smarter Initiative. So these meetings that they've set up have fostered a partnership between public health organizations, existing coalitions, and the state to create opportunities for more effective information sharing and more effective use of limited resources. And those working on water quality issues both at the state and in, you know, at the nonprofit level could really benefit from such a forum, especially as it relates to data collection in the field, which conveniently leads me into my second suggestion. There are a number of amazing volunteer water quality data collection efforts going on across the state right now through the efforts of local nonprofits. And even as I speak, those numbers are growing. Data is being diligently collected and recorded, but there is still untapped potential for that data to be used by DEP and for that data to be shared with DEP in a way that facilitates its use in the comprehensive analysis of water quality at the state level. And so my colleagues in our science department will be submitting more detailed comments on how we might best facilitate that enhanced knowledge exchange. But in the meantime, I did just want to briefly highlight this as an area where we could see a very rich and productive enhanced collaboration because it is in many ways already ongoing between DEP and outside groups. And in particular, while we as organizations, as nonprofits, often collect data as part of our missions, we want the data we collect and the work that we do to be as impactful as possible. And to this extent, we would love to collaborate with DEP staff further on how together we can better facilitate water data, water quality data collection at the local level and how we can ensure the use of that data in a meaningful way at the state level. We'd love to see enhanced definitions of acceptable methods for collecting, analyzing, and then submitting that data to the department so it can be used. And we'd love to see enhanced communication from the department regarding specific data needs that nonprofits and local groups throughout the state can help fill. And really, we know that these days, staff and resources are stretched thin. It's true in the public sector and it's certainly true in the nonprofit world as well. And so we need to make better use of the limited resources that we have. And I don't think I'm saying anything surprising to anyone in the room, but collaboration is obviously the most effective and most efficient way to do that. Open dialogue and data sharing are two simple ways to do that. Obviously, there are more. And as I mentioned, we will be submitting more detailed comments in these areas and others, but in the meantime, I want to thank you again for hosting this meeting and for allowing us to give input.
Our third speaker is Toni Granato from New Jersey Sierra Club.
Good afternoon. My name is Toni Granato and I represent the New Jersey chapter of the Sierra Club, the nation's oldest and largest environmental organization with 60,000 members and supporters throughout our state. I'm here also today on behalf of Jeff Tittle, our director, who cannot be here. And just to tell you a little bit more about the Sierra Club, we are a nonprofit advocacy organization that works to protect our environment with good legislation here in the state of New Jersey. And we also work around the country and federally in Washington. We thank the Clean Water Council for having this important meeting today. And we wanted to be here because, of course, we have many ideas to answer the questions that you've posed because a lot of the questions can be answered in former programs and policies that we've helped, we've helped to bring forward in the legislature to protect the bay. So I'll be going over a few of those programs and hope that it can inspire us to think about reviving those pieces of legislation and other rules by the DEP so we can move forward and reduce the pollution in the bay so it can be a model for other waterways in the state. So just to tell you a little bit more about myself, I'm actually from Toms River in Ocean County and I've lived there my entire life, except when I went to grad school for global sustainability. And I also was at school studying sustainable tourism. So it's a very interesting connection to what was happening in New Jersey around actually the time of Hurricane Sandy and my love and passion for the environment and how our tourism was so deeply connected to the bay and shore. And after the storm, of course, we suffered a lot of economic impacts from not having businesses open, beaches were closed. And thankfully, with the help of the DEP, the state, we have taken good steps to get people back in our homes. So from the time that I was in a, that I was a child in Toms River schools, I could remember our teachers telling us that the bay was polluted and unsafe to swim. We did it anyway, but I wouldn't dare to go swimming today or even crabbing for that matter because of the deterioration of the bay. It's one of the most utropic bays in the nation. And I've been proud to go kayaking in the bay, even recently this summer with the Sierra Club. We do outdoor programs and we're heavily involved in taking people on hikes and experiencing the outdoors. And of course, Caddis Island, which sits on the bay, is a beautiful area to really look and admire what the potential is out there. So of course, there's still boating and we've watched sailboats each summer and that's also been a beautiful way to experience what we have, just so close to us. But over the past summer, the bay's problems couldn't have been more visible. And instead of seeing nice clean water, there was an unfortunate six-block-long brown plume that was in the bay near Seaside Park. And it did prevent people to go swimming and it threatened public health by having this really visible body of water that was clearly polluted from stormwater and nutrient pollution. So we're here because we want to address these problems and we want to show that we have programs in place to help prevent further pollution in the bay and help clean the bay up. We believe that the administration and the council must address land use stormwater and implement a pollution cap for the bay as well as address impacts from climate change and sea level rise. There was a legislation that was put forward to require certain measures for the Ocean County Storm Management System to basically reduce runoff from stormwater. And these bills could have helped towns develop stormwater management plans and fund detention basin retrofits as well as demonstration projects that are much needed, but unfortunately, the governor did veto them and we think that those programs should be revived so we can reduce the pollution in the bay. And certainly, that's a program for stormwater that can be taken throughout the state. And we also are concerned with the high-density development that has been proposed, of course, with changes to the Coastal Areas Facilities Review Act. And that is a DEP rule that affects the entire state, but we believe it will increase growth in Tuckerton and Manaluking in the watershed. And we're concerned that it will develop in these vulnerable areas and also increase the amount of people living in the watershed. As well as another rule that was recently proposed called the Water Quality Planning Rules under the DEP that would allow additional source service areas to be developed in environmentally sensitive areas. And again, this does affect the whole state, so we're, we're just wanting to bring, bring these rules up and point out that if we can go back and revise the rules, return them to what they were before or make them better, we hope that it will, it will alleviate the development in parts of the state that does cause pollution in our waterways. And we believe that Hurricane Sandy is definitely an alarm bell for decision-makers in government to act on overdevelopment. And of course, it has put the bay at risk and even in my 25 years, I've seen how much more crowded Ocean County is. And my real concerns are just the capacity for, for building homes in areas that are vulnerable to sea level rise and also making sure that we have a sustainable economic policies in place so we can appropriately handle this amount of people in our area. And we also wanted to point out a specific study by Dr. Mike Kenisch authored at the Rutgers Institute of Marine and Coastal Scientists on the deteriorating health of the bay. And this report is crucial because it shows that the pollution in the bay is worse than we previously thought because of nitrate and phosphorus pollution. And if you don't know about Dr. Kenisch, she's a renowned scientist honored by his peers for the work that he's done on the Barnegat Bay. And I'm sure throughout the day, we've been talking about monitoring and how important research is, but we really need to relook at Dr. Kenisch's research because his report called for the need to create a total maximum daily load and place a cap on pollution for the Barnegat Bay. And certainly, that could be a measure that could also be implemented in other waterways. So with the Rutgers report, there's enough data to declare that the bay is impaired and implement a TMDO. And this should definitely be one of the top priorities to improve water quality. And we also believe that we need to list the bay on the 303D list because it will provide the necessary funding that we need to help prevent pollution at its source. And requiring a cap of pollution is so important because we do have really good programs that have been proposed about involving residents to reduce pollution. And many of those are voluntary, so we believe that if we do enforce something that is across the board and not voluntary, we will see a lot more benefits quicker. And I think that's really most of, you know, our recommendations that we should just kind of look to the past of the legislation and the studies that we've already done on the bay and hopefully that it could be a model. And we really wanted to just reiterate that we need policy and action that will protect the bay and time is running out. And without this implementation and enforcement, we're seriously concerned about the future of the bay and having it for future generations. And that's why we're here. So I plan to submit my testimony and I hope that the Clean Water Council and the DEP will take a further look at it, will offer a lot more details about the legislation and programs that we, I discussed. And we look forward to working together to implement necessary programs to protect the bay. Thank you.
So does anyone else wish to provide testimony? Would you like to come forward?
My name is Britta Wenzel. I'm the executive director for Save Barnegat Bay. And so we are a 45-year-old citizen organization started in the watershed of the largest body of water in the state of New Jersey. And in fact, the fertilizer law was written in our little office in Lavallette. The marine conservation zone at the Sedge Island of Island Beach State Park was written in our little office. The largest land acquisition in Ocean County's history, which happened, is happening right now, 775 acres, is because of our work some years ago to fight a development of 4,500 homes in that location. And over the 45 years, tens of thousands of acres have been protected by the citizen effort in Ocean County. So I'm here to say that partnerships do work. I'm glad that you're taking a look at what has happened in Barnegat Bay, but it's not just the result of a current administration. It's actually a lot of hard work. It took 45 years and we're not done. In my office, the joke is, "Did we save it yet?" And our organization is 99.8% funded by actual people, residents, small businesses, clambers, small companies. This can work with citizens. It can work with the state, federal. We work with NRCS. We work with the Watershed Association, Sierra Club. We work with a lot of people. Partnerships can be very effective, but we have to deliver management policies too. And so without that, we're not really being serious. We're just having press releases. We need to be quantitative in our approach. And there are real issues on the ground, as Toni pointed out, to the little brown spot on the bay today. I actually have aerial photographs from a drone yesterday for the nine new point sources of pollution in Barnegat Bay. So keep forging ahead. You can accomplish wonderful things, but it takes a lot of very hard, serious work, money, hours, and resources. And we cannot avoid to make difficult decisions like setting TMDLs, declaring the bay impaired, and rolling up our sleeves from a policy perspective. Thank you.
Okay. Before we close, unfortunately, he had to leave, but I do want to recognize for the record, with the Clean Water Council, many of the members of the Clean Water Council have, shall we say, a fairly long tenure. It seems to be that once you're on, you don't go off very easily, right Toni? Gina, take that as fair warning. But one of our very, very long-term members is Fardos Ali from the New Jersey Department of Agriculture. And, oh, there he is. You're back in. Okay. I'm sorry. And Fardos is managing to get off the Clean Water Council because after a very long service with the Department of Agriculture, he is retiring. And I wanted to, to recognize his service both to the council and to the Department of Agriculture. When I was with DEP back in the 90s, I served on the State's Oil Conservation Committee, interacted with Fardos there. We seem to haunt each other over the years in various manners. But Fardos, thank you very much for your involvement with the council and I do appreciate all the work that you've done with us. Thank you very much.[1797.11][1797.11] Thank you.
I remember my first meeting with the council in June 1987.
Which was only 10 years after the council was actually founded, so that's pretty good.
I have been very much fortunate to be part of this council and part of the water quality in New Jersey. I very much take ownership to the water quality in New Jersey and wherever I live. So I hope that you will carry this to the further heights, and you know that my wish and dream that someday the Arthur Kill will be cleaned up.
That's a good one. All right. No further testimony. With that, I declare this hearing closed, and thank you very much for your attendance.